Alderwoman, Burnfield. Alderman Ross.
Yeah.
Mayor, we have a call.
Okay, thank you. Approval agenda?
No approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Martin, I guess with you.
Okay. We had the second meeting of the Building Codes Committee and were able to get through the entire residential code largely because Brenda had found a spreadsheet that analyzed the changes in the codes from 2003 to 2012. So, committee made a bunch of decisions. It's a lot of little things that you have to think about, but that was kind of a major piece of the work because the most changes were in that particular code. Now, we'll move on to the commercial code and the others and it will be nearly as detailed. I've laid out, not enough one for everybody, but the engineers had proposed two alignments for Progress Parkway and the trail. Alignment one is kind of a curvy linear one. And you'll see in the upper right-hand corner that it's 2,465 feet of linear feet of pavement, but it keeps the road closer to the creek. Alignment two moves further away from the creek, but, you know, it's straighter. And then the mayor suggested maybe a combination of the two. So, I did a cut and paste, which is option three, which kind of keeps the straighter part of the road on the left side of the sheet up against Progress Parkway, but adds the closer-to-the-creek feature on the lower part of the road coming off of Parkwood. We have to give some direction to them now as to what our preference is, and so I thought I would present it under my city administrator's report tonight and we could talk about it and see what your pleasure is. The item, the leased right-of-way acquisition is item number one because obviously we're gonna need to take over the creek and with the road closer to the creek, we have to take less right-of-way. But the difference is only, total between one and two is 3.2 acres. So, you've got 13.6 acres of right-of-way with number one and 11.4 with number two. We haven't calculated number three because I just did it this afternoon.
It's the other way around.
Huh?
It's the other way around.
Or 10.4. 13.6 and 10.4. 13.6 is two.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's the other way around. And so, that's certainly a consideration. The less right-of-way we have to acquire, obviously, the less it'll cost.
Less is best.
Church.
Church.
What is the, what is the archdiocese saying?
Archdiocese has said to proceed, but nobody, I mean, until we make an offer.
Right.
You know, they've only told us in principle that they're, they'll consider our offer. Now, since grant funds are being used for the trail right-of-way, we have to follow the prescribed procedure of the local public agency rules with MODOT. So, I can't initiate an offer with the church until MODOT authorizes us to do so. Doesn't mean I can't talk to them, but I can't actually make an offer without getting prior approval from the granting agency. And so, the next step would be to kind of tell the engineer finalize this one. We'll send it off to MODOT, maybe with a preliminary conversation with the finance committee at the church. And then, when MODOT says go, we'll proceed. What we'll have to do is hire an appraiser and it'll be up to the church to do it however they want to. I think we could agree on an appraiser whose opinion both would respect, but if they prefer, and often it's done, that we would hire one and they would hire an appraiser and we'd take an average of the two, whatever they want to do is, because we're gonna end up paying for one of the appraisals under, either way we go.
This is just gonna be for hiking and biking, right?
No, that's for the roadway.
This is gonna be a regular street right-of-way?
Well, we're acquiring the right-of-way for the whole thing. We can't, we can't design the hiking and biking trail without knowing where, what the street design and elevations would be because when you build a hiking and biking trail, you know, it's gotta all match out. But we'll, you know, we'll be prepared to proceed with construction of the street if that's your desire, and there's funds available to do that from the tip.
So, we'd have access from Parkwood to industrial?
Don't we have our cart before our horse, though? I mean, I would like to hear what they want an acre before I know which to proceed with here.
Well...
I mean, that's like you giving me a blank check.
I understand.
You wanna spend $10,000, you wanna spend 20 or 30?
Well, there's, there's really difference between three acres. I mean, you got 10 acres or you got 13 acres.
But how much an acre though is?
That will be subject to the appraisal.
And kind of like farm ground or whatever?
It is farm ground, yeah.
So, that's gonna make a difference far as the appraisal?
Farm ground is drainage ditch.
Well, and the drainage ditches that doesn't have any.
You have previous discussions with the church. I remember them talking about they wanted the hiking and biking trail on the roadway on the right side of the, which is what was done.
Yeah.
Was there any other thing that was their concern or anything that they?
Well, one of the conditions of negotiating with us was connecting to the parking area. So, that's, now, maybe not something we would've otherwise done, but they asked that we include that as part of the project in a condition of their cooperation.
So, they'd have access outside of the back ball field there?
Mm-hmm.
Which makes sense.
Yeah, good thing. Well, straighter is better for a road. Progress Parkway's kinda...
Well, it seemed like to me they wanted to stay as close to the drainage ditch as possible.
It's like what Joker says, you know, you get benefits of this one and you get benefits of that one. So, it's just a question of...
Do we have to decide?
Some people would argue that the more curvy linear road reduces speeds and keeps it from becoming a racetrack.
That's true. Do we have to decide tonight?
They've done that quite well on Progress Parkway.
No.
Option three takes us farther away, too.
Well, the only reason that I came up with a combination of the two is that, is that it does give you some curves in it because Parkwood is a very straight street and option number two makes it even longer, straighter. The one, and the curvy one, I didn't get it. It was just personal. Didn't like the curvy, as curvy as it was down at the end of it where it hits Progress Parkway on number one. But number two, or number three, the one that I took half of each, gives you the curve and it also shortens that, the road, the road is a little shorter going over to that parking lot on that. It takes the shorter road there and it does put a curve in it, maybe to reduce some speed, and gives you somewhat of a straighter approach to Progress Parkway. That was the only reason of that. But, so, it's, and it's probably gonna be somewhere, it's gonna be somewhere between 10 and 13 acres, right? It's gonna be a combination of the two, so...
So, kind of it's gonna be in between there?
Yeah. I mean, again, between the two proposals, the only difference is three acres, so...
But what we're doing tonight is selecting something so we can proceed.
Or, if you wanna give it consideration, we can just take it under advisement and come back next week. There's no, we have to make progress, but we don't have a deadline on this if you'd like to give it some thought.
What is deadline?
Can we find out what they want for an acre? Or do they?
Well, we only do that after appraisal and we only really determine the appraisal based on which one we need to pick, you know?
Okay.
Well, whatever one we pick, that's gonna give us an idea about what the cost is on the other two.
Yeah, and in answer to the deadline question, we have, we had a schedule that we were unable to meet because of having to overcome the core of engineers' involvement and get the archdiocese to agree in principle with the idea, and that took some time. So, we still have to go back with a revised schedule and MODOT's aware of this, but we haven't gone back with a revised schedule right now and I will, in the next week or so, give them the new schedule. But, you know, we need to make a decision and make progress without any undue delay, but waiting a couple of weeks for another meeting is not credit.
Remember when we originally went to the church and we had an engineer real roughly look at it? I think our first meeting with the church, it was, one option was 19 acres, I think, and one was 22 or 23. So, we're well below what we thought our original estimates.
You know, the appraisal has to occur in order to comply with the federal requirements that you go to a property owner and you say, "Look, your property appraises at so-and-so." You can still get donated property and you can possibly pay a little bit more than the appraised value because if you really see this as a public project and you want it, you don't have to condemn it if you can negotiate a purchase, okay? So, but the appraisal is a step that has to be done. It doesn't set price. The price is set possibly by negotiation or possibly by just the deal, whatever the deal is. But I agree that we can't acquire it without documenting that we submitted to the property owner a appraisal that is a fair market value appraisal. But after that, you can still, you can still make a deal. So, when you say, "Let's make a deal first," that's probably not gonna work. You probably need to negotiate with the appraisal on the table in front of everybody and then you can negotiate around that. If that's your choice.
I mean, personally, I don't, I don't see any reason to wait two more weeks to look at this because this has to be decided in order to move forward.
Well, I mean, I think two definitely not, it's too straight.
I think three, the one that the mayor drew up, is the best.
Honestly, I do, too. Can we just take a vote on it?
Sure.
If you had to pick one of these?
It doesn't require a motion or anything, just directly.
But just get a consensus.
Donnie, what do you think?
All right, so everybody thinks...
You got my vote.
All right, three is the best.
Move it forward on three.
All right, I'll inform the engineer to prepare.
Over there, but it's still about a third of them.
Three. Haven't seen it yet. Get it done. The other thing is, and the rest of this is pretty routine, Alderman Stupi called me and asked me to provide a breakdown of what our cost have been for snow removal today. I sent that to you and then after going over it today, I asked Sue to make a couple of amendments to it, so I've updated it. We budgeted $25,000 for chemicals, which is the line item in which we put snow removal. The expenses that you see below that $25,000 budget are what we've actually spent. So, we're $50,554.21 to date on snow removal, which is over budget by $25,554.21. The figure below that is the amount of overtime that was used during the snow events. We're still within our budgeted line item for labor, so it doesn't cause us to be over budget, but I thought it was an expense you should see. So, the total of snow removal to date has cost us $58,130.23, and we got this weekend to come.
Does Dave want to get back to some of the trouble?
Yeah. The, this doesn't, this is just for your information. We are preparing an analysis of our budget as a, for presentation at our next meeting. I'd like to schedule a work session before the next board meeting to kind of reevaluate where we are relative to our revenues and projected expenditures and maybe make some decisions that we put off when we adopted this budget. You know, we may have to go kind of look at everything to get where you wanna be with the service you wanna provide the citizens of the city. You know, the budget was lean to start with, so there's not, not exactly fat, but it's just a matter of setting priorities. The, and we'll be prepared to do that. You know, we're, we've had a little more sales tax revenue than we projected. Of course, you know, we're just a quarter in, so we don't know how it'll reflect for the rest of the year, so I wouldn't recommend adjusting that revenue figure. We have to revise the budget to reflect both the income and expenditures related to the repair of the fire damage, and that's just a kind of a bookkeeping thing we would have to do under any circumstances. I reported at our last meeting that we're getting 100% reimbursement from the insurance company, less our deductible, and, but we still have to show that revenue and show it going out. So, we'll have all that ready and if you'll kind of write down a meeting at six...
On 13.
On March, whatever that is.
13.
13. I would appreciate it. Boring, any questions?
Is Dave looking into alternatives to salt for next year or?
I'm looking at, yes, I'm, we're considering...
Changing?
Well, I don't know about changing. I'm kind of considering and I've talked to a couple of city administrators who might put together some kind of purchasing coalition.
That sounds good.
It's a question of storage. If we buy huge quantity of salt, we're gonna have to keep it somewhere. We don't have storage. So, I'm looking at possible kind of central storage area. You know, we can all, we can buy a lot more salt, we can get it a lot cheaper. It's just a question of where we, where we can keep it. And I've talked to Festus and Perrigo.
I guess I got, I wanna go for my own good. What's the chain of command like on a snow? Do you call the shots when to call them out or who calls the shots, what time they start or what?
Dave's in charge of his personnel and he makes the decision on when to deploy them.
And you're just updated on their status?
You know, if there's, if there's a unique event or a decision that needs to be made that's not normal, he calls me and I make the decision. Otherwise, he'll do what he's been doing for the last, how many years, Dave?
29.
Dave, is that stuff that MODOT puts down, that brine or whatever, has that been ever checked into?
I did some research on that and it's pretty expensive, the way they do that out there, you know? I mean, they've got like three 10,000 gallon tanks and they got their, their mixing vat inside and they got two more tanks on the inside, so all the pumps and everything. It's not as simple as just putting salt in a, in a container and spreading. You gotta, you gotta use a hydrometer and all that stuff. I personally can't see where it does any, any good because you look at the highway, I mean, it sticks on there. I mean, they've been spreading for the last two days and, you know, and on a normal snow, which we ain't had one this year, you know, we usually get our streets down to pavement before they do theirs.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Just another thing to Martin's report. Today, a friend called and we got the, what we believe are the final drawings from the engineer on the hiking trail of Main Street with the changes on it to be submitted to MODOT. So, we think that is the last step. So, she submitted them today or will submit them tomorrow and hopefully that's the last approval and we can start the bidding process, I would hope shortly, finally, finally.
Some money's still there?
Yep, yep. So, if I remember right, I think we've, we've pretty already, pretty much already...
Met your match.
Met our match already.
Is onward.
So... Okay, staff reports. Eric.
Send in my report. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
So, you're still, you're looking for a full-time police officer?
Correct. Yeah, Officer Fisher's last day of leave was Tuesday, the 25th, so we've got some applications in and hoping to fill that pretty quickly.
Even though Ford has this in front of them in your report, I think it's worth noting that we were awarded the grant that we applied for on generators.
Yes, we were notified last week by the members of the community foundation that they have approved our grant for the full funding of 9,000 plus for the installation of the generator, which will power certain elements of both the police department and City Hall.
What type of generator are we looking at?
I have no idea. Felix Meyer put the specs together for me. I, I'm not an electrician by, by any standards. It will be hooked to our natural gas line outside, so it won't be a diesel, yeah, it won't be, it'll, it'll be a direct feed for automatic kick-on should, should we have a power outage. But as far as the kilowatt hours and all that, I have no, no clue. Even if I had the answer, I wouldn't know what it meant, so...
That's a new police officer working out.
He seems to be doing really well, yes.
Anything else for Eric?
Thank you.
Hey, Chief, did you wanna mention the gun raffle?
Steve.
Sure, sure. We are raffling off a small caliber Smith &amp; Wesson handgun. It's got a laser sight. The proceeds will benefit Officer Fisher, who is battling renal cancer right now. And, you know, obviously, the last couple of years have been, been kind of rough for, for some of the members of the department, so, you know, we certainly understand that everybody's, everybody's gotta tighten down a little bit and times are tough, but the raffle tickets are $5 apiece or five for 20. And we have some tickets at the lobby of our police department and Officer Scott or Sergeant Scott with the department has, has some tickets also. So, if anybody would like to pick those up, they're certainly, certainly available. And talking to Alderman Stupi and Officer Fisher, we're gonna try to shoot for, if there is some type of benefit, maybe the warmer months, and we're gonna try to consolidate more so than, than previous experiences where there were two or three or four smaller benefits, you know, if, if there is something orchestrated, we're hoping to kind of consolidate some and hopefully keep from stretching people out too much, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve and Terry are at a manager's meeting, so he won't be here in person to present So, if they might have any questions, we'd certainly get you back the answers.
I just think it looks pretty good that our percent of water loss keeps going down. They just keep working on it and they're doing a good job.
Dave, we'll go to you.
Good evening.
I think you should address the patching work you've been doing and the amount of asphalt that you've used so far.
Yeah, we've, we went through pretty close to 400 bags of asphalt already and we're nowhere near being done, so it's a, as you see, Fourth Street and Lynn Drive's tore up today. I did a little assessment on it and I think right now we're right at 60 yards of concrete is what it's gonna take to patch, you know, most of the bad spots. That's not, you know, kind of what's gonna happen here in the next few weeks whenever, if it would ever warm up.
They got a spot right there on top of Washington, right there by Thurman's house. Who's responsible for that? Did they tear that up?
The, the Lions dug it up and then, but we gotta wait for the weather to warm up before we can patch it, so... Which I think they was, there's, they took a fire hydrant out of there and it hasn't been replaced yet, so they might be waiting on that, too, so...
Why they taking a while, you don't know.
Dave, when you're talking that much concrete to patching, is it still better off, are we still better off patching with concrete or asphalt?
We're better off with concrete. Figure by the time that we dig it down enough to put base in it and then, you know, we gotta go get the rock and we gotta go over and get the asphalt and it comes out, it's real close. I mean, it's just a little bit cheaper, but not much to use asphalt and we're better off with the concrete because it'll last a lot longer.
You know, I was driving down Lynn Drive.
Oh, don't do that.
Had to do a lot of thugging, but in the way that this crumbles up, that, I would think, too, that if you're gonna fix something like that in concrete is the best way to go because at least you can get something that's not gonna fall off.
I can see most of them roads out there doesn't have any base at all. It's just, you know, they just poured that on top of dirt. Years ago, they just mixed the rock and the oil together and so it really wasn't actually asphalt, so... So, like I say, now, you know, the ground's freezing and thawing, it's popping and I'd say, I haven't, I haven't did the assessments on all the roads yet because there's no sense in it right now until, till the weather breaks and...
Yeah, Cedar Drive is really bad, too.
Oh, yeah. There's almost all of them. Yeah, it's almost all of them.
You have a priority, huh?
Yeah, you know, I heard you talking about the salt budget, but my asphalt budget's gonna be shot, too. It's quarterly, yeah. I think I've got like $8,000 left and like I say, that's, we're talking over $6,000 right now just to patch what the bad spot...
And you have priority on which, what you're doing first, right?
Yeah, we're gonna do the worst part, yeah.
Like on Washington where the school uses all of those?
Yeah, that and on top of Maxwell Hill and on the curb on Lynn Drive and out on Parkwood. I mean, we gotta do something out there. And Loppy was gonna show up today to give me a rough estimate of what it would cost to do. And Loppy was still up today to give me a rough estimate of what it would cost to do progress or point base, but he never showed up, so.
Okay. Dave, on your patching, are you doing the patching on the worst spots?
We're trying to get the deepest holes, yeah. Because a lot of the little thin ones, that material that we use, it won't stick in it. So, until the weather breaks where they're making coal mix, where we can come back and, you know, coal mix works real good for the real thin ones. But like I said, you know, it's gonna continue to keep popping, so.
Well, it was on the news tonight and-
I tell you what, some of the cities are worse off than we are. I think New York City, they were showing them and the potholes were so big and the tires were, they were disappearing.
And actually, as you notice, we put rock up on Maxwell Hill today because, you know, it's too cold and we don't have enough of that bag stuff to try to patch that, so we just put rock in here to kind of level it up.
Right, they're gonna level out, probably, so not tip them down and running a tire and-
Anything else?
We got no choice, do we? And John, as far as calling people out, I kind of watched, you know, the police department kind of helps me out because, you know, there's sometimes I gotta get some sleep and, but it kind of depends on the weather. Like this year, since it's been so cold, like I said, we ain't had a weather like this since, what, eighty-two? But it, normal winters, we let it get up at least an inch or more before we move it. When it gets like this, it'll stick faster and get slicker faster, so we gotta get out earlier. And like the other night, when I called the guys out, whenever it was starting to freeze, freezing rain, you know, we get there while we can because, like I say, I had called Darren and he never made it up the hill and Gary would probably never made it down the hill, so, but thank goodness we didn't have to do much, but, yeah, this has been just a crazy winter.
Well, next year, we probably won't use one ounce of salt.
I hope not.
We'll be over budgeted.
We're gonna have five thousand tons in storage, something like that.
We died, we won't need it.
I'm looking forward to spraying weeds.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Dave.
Okay.
Y'all have a good evening.
And you have the report from Nick there?
Yeah, I think in reviewing this, the noteworthy thing is they're beginning to get some inquiries about their opening, so that was encouraging to see.
Do they have it maybe next week or whatever on the fire truck? Don't you know of?
Monday.
Monday, okay.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a few high points I want to hit on this evening. First of all, the confirmed events for our activities that I passed out to you last time, it was a one-page sheet that looked like this. These have all been posted, of course, on our Visit St. Genevieve website for the whole year, but also on the Visit Missouri website and several other free event listing sites that we can post, about fifteen different websites that we can post St. Genevieve's events. On these websites has all been done in the month of January by our staff and we're really excited about that. And we also submit those to regional magazines and so on. So, if you see St. Genevieve's information in magazines or online, it's because of the process that we went through at the request of the Tourism Advisory Council to get all those event confirmation sheets in in the months of November and December so that we could enter them at the beginning of the year. Not to say that we couldn't add events later on, but we want to get all those recurring events out there so that people know how to make their plans for travel. The second sheet in your packet is the calendar sheet that shows, of course, I talked last Alderman meeting about December, but you can see on the left-hand side there, the new blue bar that we added for January of 2014. We were very pleased to see that foot traffic in January was actually up three percent over last year despite the difficulties with weather that we had in January kind of off and on. And just recently, we had a record number of attendees to participate in the Chocolate Walk event that was coordinated through the St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal Program. There were only, there were over two hundred and seventy-five paid participants on the walk and I think last year they had about two hundred, so that was a real boost. And then, I wanted to point out to you, you have two sheets in your packet that look like this, Leisure Travel and an article there about Missouri with a French accent. That's actually this book. This is a full-color magazine that goes out to group tour planners all over the country and over two thousand tour planners in Missouri and the states that touch Missouri. And we had a three-page article and an advertisement in that. And then the other sheet that I gave you, a copy of the front cover and also first page of the article, is this article in American Spirit Magazine. It was a very nice article that came out. This is the Daughters of the American Revolution and this was their magazine that came out with a very nice article about St. Genevieve. So, our outreach efforts are starting to pay off. We're trying to continue to get nice editorial coverage in full glossy magazines like this that are nationwide publications, as well as our regional publications, and you'll be seeing more in some of those regional publications coming up in the upcoming months. And then, I just wanted to touch on tomorrow night is our first Fourth Friday event of the year for St. Genevieve. The Fourth Friday Art Walk events only occur between the months of February and November, so I know you've been missing them the last couple of months, but there's a flyer included in your packet to encourage everyone to participate in the Fourth Friday Art Walk event. And who saw coverage about this on Channel Four today? Because we were featured in the Great Day St. Louis about fun things to do in the St. Louis region. There was St. Louis Mardi Gras and there was the St. Genevieve Art Walk with a Mardi Gras theme, so we're pretty excited about that. And then also, the TV commercial, I had reported at the last meeting that our first commercial kind of focused on the Christmas Walk and things that you can do in St. Genevieve in the wintertime, and then we kind of revamped it after the holidays, like ready for a break after the holidays. Well, we just keep revamping that commercial and right now it's, are you looking for a getaway, a nice getaway weekend to St. Genevieve, to the shops, the bed and breakfast and the wineries? And so, that commercial will be playing next week, the week of March third, and the following week, and it'll be on Channel Four, KMOV, so be sure you tune into that. And I think that concludes my report unless anyone has any questions.
Hey, I heard on KMOV one Saturday morning, like at quarter to six in the morning, they were talking about St. Genevieve.
Oh, fantastic.
I think it was the group event weekend.
Yes.
Yeah, and they were, the two folks on the radio were talking about that and telling folks that's where you need to go this weekend.
Well, good, I'll have to send them a thank you note.
And you did-
If it was KMOX, no, it wasn't paid coverage by us, but we do send out press releases, so sometimes they pick up on that information.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Thanks, Eric.
Thanks. Any committee reports?
We had a Channel 798 board meeting the other night. Everything seemed to be running pretty good. Our YouTube is growing in numbers. We're getting, we're working on some public service announcements. We also always have total info months if anybody wants to sponsor us. I know I say that every time, but that's important, that's a way that we get some funds. Also, one thing, our youth videographer, Nicole, reported that she completed a school project, which was a video about texting and driving, and the video won the regional competition and is also being advanced to the state level, so. And she's gonna get it to Don so he can put it on the YouTube channel for us, so pretty proud of her for doing all that. Let's see, we've got our next meeting, March 25th, so.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Also, Teddy, I wasn't able to make the last Landmarks Soul Revision meeting and I don't know if there's any more to report there. I think it's going well, right?
Well, we're meeting again tomorrow at one o'clock and the last meeting, it went really well. There were some good ideas. We're all, we're looking at all the different ideas that were brought up at the meeting and I'm sure that we'll probably push on with some of those ideas.
Looks like it's going to be a considerable change from where we're at.
I think it will be, a very positive change.
Okay, we'll go on to the minutes of the February 13th meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And the treasures report on here?
Mm-hmm.
It is? What am I, okay. Gee, financial report for January.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, Resolution 2014-09, a resolution reappointing Beth Caldwell to the St. Genevieve Tourism Advisory Council.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And Resolution 2014-10, a resolution reappointing Kelly Fowler to the St. Genevieve Tourism Advisory Council.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Resolution 2014-11, a resolution of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri stating intent to apply for a grant from the St. Genevieve County Economic Development Fund, St. Genevieve Community Foundation, in the amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars for this St. Genevieve Tourism Department.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, Old Business Bill Number 3963, second reading.
In the ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve units above and-
Motion first.
Second. Can we hit some discussion? Did you change the-
You asked me to evaluate where we stood relative to our band revenue and we attached that to the packet that you received and there's a memo regarding our expenditures, which is self-explanatory. So, were we to increase the amount, we're already using reserves in order to fund it at the current level. Were we to increase it, we would use them that much faster and then end up having to go to the CD to continue the level of support.
Little question. Couple, about three years ago, I think they set up this grant committee process and that was to use some of the money from this. For that, should we rethink that then and look at funding or better funding our municipal band and giving these people a raise that they haven't had for ten years? That's what the city tax is all about, is for the St. Genevieve County Municipal Band. These people haven't had a raise for ten years and we're taking money to fund a grant process. Maybe we should scale back on that and take care of our people.
So, do we have any idea what this cost is gonna be and everything, as far as giving the people a raise, what, okay, then, what size of municipal band do you need?
This is seven, I think. Close, so. Six, I think it's-
Well, I mean, it's up to the committee to figure out.
I think that's something we need to look at as opposed to, we should take care of that first before we take money from them to do this bank.
Well, I think it should be a two-way approach. You need to take a look at how many people need to be in the band, municipal band, and I agree that they need a raise, but you need to look at the grant also, just not look at one area.
I'm not saying not to look at that area, but I'm saying that was put in place because they had excess money and that's one way they were gonna use it to help the things and that's fine, but maybe we need to step back from that and take care of this and then see what's left to do the grant process. Because the taxpayer's money is for that band, those people want to see that band. That's what that money's for, that's what that's built for.
I agree.
I know.
Let me just throw this one out there, do we really, and, you know, certainly eventually it would go down to nothing, but do we really need fifty-six thousand dollars sitting in a CD for the band?
Right.
I mean-
What's the contingency?
What are you gonna, what are you gonna do with it?
It's gotta be spent on the band.
It's gotta be spent on the band and-
Didn't they ask for a wagon?
It must be emergency, but-
Didn't they ask for a wagon?
They would need a fund, a reserve fund.
Why? Yeah, why do we need this emergency fund?
Yeah, I, granted, and you're on a one-way street to zero, but I don't know how long that would take to get there, so I, you could, you know, technically or realistically, you could, you know, give them a raise and still continue with the grant program for a period of, I don't know how long it would take to do that.
Two more grudge years, like, fiscal year sixteen will run out of the reserve.
Yeah, you'll be, you'd be into the, you'd be into the CD.
Yeah.
Right, but again, I don't know what enjoyment and what benefit is the CD to the taxpayers, I mean, other than, it's not like, I mean, it's not like we're gonna have a-
There's a band, there's an emergency, like a bigger tuna.
Water plant blow up and we need emergency funds to do this, I mean, what-
Now that you say that, don't, don't make me jinx this.
Well, I tend to agree with you. They do have equipment wearing out and capital needs that they have to replace and you would wanna keep some reserve to cover equipment replacement and that kind of thing. I don't know that you need fifty-six thousand dollars, but-
Right, right. I wouldn't, certainly wouldn't advocate to take it down to nothing by far and maybe the whole thing at some point needs a look at after that. I, I think, I guess the band pretty much has just let anybody, you know, I don't know that it's this board's decision to say, well, we're gonna have a band that's gonna have sixty people in it or we're gonna have one that's forty, that's gonna only have forty people in it. Can they entertain, can they do whatever they do for forty people versus sixty people? I don't think that's a decision that we should probably make, but it is a point, I guess, when it comes to money, as far as that point, if you're gonna continue the grant program and how many people are benefiting from the total municipal band versus the grants. I, I don't know, that's a really hard one to measure, too, that I don't think you could measure. So.
Do we have to have the motion amended to add the raises in? Yes.
So, we need to make a motion to amend?
If you wanna add some amount, in addition to the thirteen thousand that you're making in three payments, you would need to change those figures on page, the third page of the resolution.
Can we move this to the next meeting?
Well, I think the original numbers were between three and six thousand, I think.
And that's given, everyone a raise.
Wouldn't that be in the last minutes?
It is. Here it is, that page is seven hundred three to six thousand. Well, that's, yeah, well, I'm sure they could narrow that down.
Can we just push this to the next meeting? Look at being amended?
We don't think of payments till May.
Let them amend it and then-
Sure.
Well, you can amend it.
Yeah, but we don't know how much.
Well, that's what I'm saying, who's gonna decide that?
Well, the band needs to come back to us and say how much they need.
We can have, we can have the new band president come in and just communicate with you the number that they want and then you can bring it back to the next meeting.
Sure.
So, do you need a motion to move to table?
We do a motion to table.
Yes.
You gotta, do you have a first reading motion?
Move to second.
Second, you can have a motion to table.
Motion to table?
No, that's still there.
First and second.
You can still entertain a motion to table during the discussion.
Motion to table?
Second. All in favor?
Can I add something before we...
Sure.
Normally, what was it they appropriated for the grant program?
Eight thousand.
It wasn't eight thousand every year though. It was only like, who raised it from like 3,000 to 8,000? I mean, we're worried about paying them, but who raised that?
I think it's at eight, but they don't necessarily spend that amount every year.
They never did. Never spend that much. It was up to that amount.
Is it called page two there?
I know, I'm reading it here.
It was up to that amount.
I see that eight thousand. I mean, maybe we need to look into that.
That's what I'm saying.
We're worried about that.
Did we have a second on that table?
Yeah, yeah.
When I meet, I'll raise that issue.
See if they would...
The best combination of grants and payments.
Maybe scale that back a little bit. They never, we never really ever used that much.
Well, and it's kind of back to the mayor's question.
Why is it there?
Yeah, if you have it, it's supposed to be...
Okay, all in favor, table?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Bill Number 3964, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County to assist in the funding and cooperation of the St. Genevieve County Recycling Center.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Zerwick? Yes. Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderwoman Brunkfield?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 3965 now becomes ordinance 3903, I mean 3964, excuse me.
Okay, thank you. Bill Number 3965, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County regarding 911 dispatching services for the calendar year 2014. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Brunkfield?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwick?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 3965 now becomes ordinance 3904.
Thank you. Bill Number 3966, second reading.
An ordinance allowing the 2014 Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday to apply to the local sales tax of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri between April 19th and April 25th, 2014. Move to approve.
Second.
Yes, sir.
I think you mentioned before, Mayor, that there's only a few cities that actually do this anymore.
Well, I think there was, there was only a few city and counties together that, that were doing it. Like, I remember last year it seemed like there was five or so, I think it was less than 10 in the state where, where they were, you were able to take advantage of both the city and the county sales tax.
That's, I mean, I guess they make a lot of sales during this time, the businesses. Only what I'm concerned about is losing tax revenue for the city. But it benefits the people.
Marizuko's and A&amp;K are, well, I guess your furnaces and stuff fall under that category, right?
Right, yeah. The plumbing and heating also benefit from this.
And then the hardware store are kind of do it. The windows, right? Oh, no, just for appliances.
Yeah, right.
They would have just one.
Energy star part.
Well, I'm just concerned, you know, is the city financially able to keep doing this in the future, you know? Or are we not getting tax revenue? That's something we will talk about, I guess, at a later date, at the next meeting.
Maybe, first of all, you need the information as to how much was actually purchased. I mean, because it could be such a minute amount that...
I have no idea, that's what I'm saying. I don't know what the benefits are to them, to businesses.
Because people have to purchase within those dates.
We can ask them. I just asked and they don't recall whether there's a, whether...
Impact or not.
DOR, if they put out a report, because I think you do have to send in exemptions. I think you do have to fill out something saying that they sold it and it was exempt. So I don't know if they combine that and send us citywide a, here's what, here's what was given up, more or less, through that week. I don't know, we'll check though. And I honestly have not heard from any of the people that would really affect, like the, like the heating and cooling people and the appliance people. I haven't heard if it's a big deal for them. You're right, it's kind of a, kind of a good thing, certainly a good thing, and if they do do a lot, where they do, you know, it's good for them, good for their business, good for them to be here and us to assist them in that part of it and, but, you know, we are giving up some tax revenue as far as that part of it goes, but if we wouldn't be doing it, would they be getting that business that week? Probably not.
I think I just didn't know what that number would be, because you'd need a lot...
We can find out if it's...
Sit around and wait.
See if we can find it.
It'd be, I mean, it'd be something to know next year when we go through this again.
The same for the school tax. I mean, people wait till that weekend to buy their school supplies so they know they get the tax break. Might be a dollar or two, but it's still...
Sure, Marzuko's knows. Remember, this is only on the first $1,500.
Yeah, there's a limit, so it's not...
Okay.
Okay, I think we have a motion in a second. Anything else? Roll call.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwick?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderwoman Brunkfield?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 3966 now becomes ordinance 3905.
Okay, thank you. Bill Number 3967, second reading.
An ordinance approving the amendment of the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Enhancement Funds Supplemental Agreement dated June 29, 2007. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Brunkfield?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwick?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Six yes, zero no's, two absent. Bill Number 3967 now becomes ordinance Number 3906.
Okay, thank you. New business, Bill Number 3968, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a three-year contract for the provision of cemetery maintenance service with K&amp;J Landscaping of St. Genevieve, Missouri, in the amount not to exceed $9,816.
Move to approve. I have a discussion.
Second.
Discussion.
And this is just for our part of the cemetery?
What's the old cemetery and the new, oh, and our part of the...
Yes, the, this contract was up, it was bid. There were, there were three bidders. This was the low bidder, the company that has been doing it for years chose not to bid. I met with the owner of this company to ensure that he understood the scope of the work that was involved, and he did, he does. And, and I called his references and they were remarkably good.
So what, we've normally been paying close to that for three-year contracts?
It's a lot cheaper than what we have been paying.
And we locked them in for three years.
Maybe we should hire one to...
I mean, the difference was significant enough that I called him in. He said, "You sure?" I said, "You sure?" He goes, "Yeah, I'm sure."
Good for him.
That's a lot of work, I mean, pushing to approve that.
Yeah. It's already on the table.
Okay, all in favor then, first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public comments, anyone?
Hello, Bob Browning.
Okay, Mr. Browning, I'm not exactly sure what you're here to address the board about.
Well, you told me here.
Okay, I was advised today, shortly before the meeting, that if this is, if this involves an open case, that we're not to talk about it in open session until the case has been decided.
Another way to keep me quiet?
No, I...
I tried everything to talk to you, you even avoided me.
Pardon me?
I said, "You've been avoiding my calls? You didn't call me till other citizens called you about this. Then you called me back, wanted me to fill out papers, bring the FBI in. Okay, now you're, now you don't want to talk to me."
I don't mind, I, again, it's an open case. No, I don't want to talk to you. And until it's, you're more than welcome, when this thing is over, to come back and address the board, but until it's as it's an open case...
That's what I asked you, and you told me no.
Pardon me?
You told me no. You told me to come down here tonight, speak my piece, and you had papers for me to...
I can, and I will give you that form to fill out, but as far as, I was just advised before the meeting that it's an open case and we're not to discuss it in open session. So, and again, you're more than welcome to come back when this is all over and talk to us about it.
Come back when?
When it's all over with, when it's disposed.
So, the chief can get a bogus warrant to come out and arrest me.
Hey, we're not talking about it, you're done.
No. Okay, where's my papers filled out? You told me they'd be here tonight.
I'll get it to you after the meeting.
Yes, sir. You have a right to speak.
You'll have a right to speak, like I said, when this is done. Anybody else? Okay, any other business?
Yeah, what's the argument on trash and junk in somebody's backyard when it blows? I know we had hurricane winds here over, but even when it's 10 miles an hour wind, this person has problem with boxes and plastic in somebody else's yard blowing 30 yards or whatever to somebody else's.
We have a solid waste ordinance that allows us to intervene when it's, rises to the level of a public nuisance. Obviously, it's a nuisance to somebody.
Right.
But anytime we receive a complaint, we respond.
Okay, so they should contact City Hall?
Just call in, we'll, we'll go out and inspect.
Okay.
And we'll advise the property owners that they need to take better care of their property. In terms of us being able to go in and do something without the property owner's cooperation, that's when it has to get to the level of a public nuisance.
Well, they weren't sure how to go about it, the protocol.
Just call.
Okay.
We'll, we'll log it, we'll send the inspector out and we'll take, try and take care of it amicably.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, other business?
You did, Jen?
Second.
Oh, I would like to recognize the Boy Scouts in our crowd tonight. You guys like to stand up?
Yeah, stand up, guys.
You guys need to say your names?
Anyone here, Drew, something?
No?
I'm Bryce.
I'm Ben.
I'm Jack.
I'm Mason.
Matthew.
I'm Caleb.
Okay.
Go back and do last name.
I'm Ryan.
I'm happy guys, yeah.
Are you guys earning a badge?
Okay, that's great, that's great. Good to have you. Keep, keep involved and keep going. I could imagine some of you older guys are getting to, I hope, getting to, getting close to Eagle Scout. It's, believe me, it's well worth it, hang in there. All right, thanks you guys. You have a motion?
Yep.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
donations from viewers like you. Thank you for your support.